Entertainer motion would be done.
Is there a second? Any additions, corrections?
Just just his last name.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, first on the agenda is Richard Mason. Curious to who Richard... Are you Richard Mason?
I am!
Alright, you're on.
Okay, good. I come here complaining bitterly. Trying to sell a house lot. In fact, in two parcels, I had lots all sold, cash sales. But because of your requirements in your zoning that, especially with the buffer strips around wetlands, which concludes pretty much any development. I got one parcel where my mother's house was. Actually here, there's, you know, 825 feet on Mason Road, 1,000 feet on San Pedro, and yet can't build any houses. Lots because of the 250-foot buffer strip around the wetland areas. It bothers me as being a professional forester, land manager, that that is way... You don't need a 250-foot buffer strip around a 10-50-acre wetlands to protect it. But the way it is now is just to just conclude. So, again, the parcel down there is assessed at $73,000. And all you do is grow timber. And I can't grow $73,000 worth of timber on that property. And it's just, I guess it bothers me when I look at it. And I've been, in fact, one time I was in charge, 165,000 acres of land. I understand wetlands, I understand land management, I understand developments and everything else. But it's hard for me to conceive why the town has put such a restrictive nature on property. And then, the biggest thing is that any acreage of road frontage cannot be within that 250-foot buffer strip. And that's what really impedes it. Now, down on Mason Road, sold a house lot there, built a house, got a permit from the town. And now, I left 550 feet, so I thought I could sell two house lots. Now, I might be able to squeeze in one house lot. I don't know, but it's gonna take a lot of land. And it just, I mean, I'm not sure. Of course, being a known resident, and when they see it's coming up over, I don't have a chance to, you know. I mean, if I owned the town meeting, I didn't own the town meeting once, you know, on the 18th. If I'd have known that, I'd have been here. But of course, being out of the area and all. But it bothers me is being restrictive. Over the flat ground road, own 34 acres, can do nothing with that. Again, just because of the way the restrictive nature is. So it's just, you know, I know I'm talking to Ken. He says, "Well, no one really complains." Well, I'm complaining, you know, bitterly about the restrictive nature of the zone. And it just doesn't seem to see any, you know, it doesn't make any difference about the soils, or what the, how the house lot could it be? I mean, there's no rhyme or raffication, a real way to change, you know, to get around, because that's the way it's in the ordinances. So it seemed to me like when you have a perfectly good site with good soils, I mean, that should carry some weight rather than just a line drawn on on the paper. And I know, again, the tax maps on accurate. I mean, down there, they've got the wetland going across San Pedro. I mean, it's at least over 100 feet from San Pedro. Yet on this, on this map, it shows so the wetlands going across San Pedro. So there's inaccuracy in the tax maps. Up there in that parcel, you know, on the tax map, it shows 570 feet. On the ground, it's 427 feet. I mean, that's a little bit of discrepancy of just what it is. So, but again, so I looked at it, I say, you know, where is accuracy in these, in these tax maps? So I don't know, you know. I guess, I just don't understand why the town is being so restrictive in the ordinances. But it's there, not reprimanded, it's there. But no one seems to want to change it, and the whole thing is, so I don't know what. I guess, I'm asking, do I have any recourse as far as this? Your property, as far as selling?
And this is, yes, but what did Ken say? What did Ken say? I wish he was in there.
Well, yeah, he just said, what he said was down there is, well, why don't you build a road in, and then you'd have road frontage? I suppose for this, $40,000, $50,000 in a road? So I could have road frontage and be able to sell a house lot? But he just says, because it falls within that 250-foot buffer strip.
Richard, the 10-acre wetland was triggered to 250-foot buffer strip. That's a state law. We didn't make that any more rigorous than it already. Maybe Ken could give it to you.
Yeah, but there's gotta be some recourse to be able to look at this and say, you know, if it's just black and white, then that's the way it is. But it bothers me is that we've been back to parcel lands within the family since 1850. We've been paying a lot of taxes on it. You did pay taxes, and yet, you know, we can't recover, you know, what really the value is there. And so if that's, you know, if you're going 100% by it, if it's, again, I say 7 acres, and, you know, Ken says it's 16 acres. But again, I'd have to go out and hire a surveyor. The whole thing is, if it's to make it less than 10 acres. And I understand your regulations. If it's under 10 acres, then the buffer strip does fall down less. But is there any recourse whatsoever? You know, I guess, that's what I'm asking. Or is it just strictly black and white? And I'm left with a parcel land of close to 60 acres? And all you do is grow timber?
So, looks like the subdivision's on this Google Earth right here. This is the Mason Farm subdivision we had just went through. So as we're coming up here, Mr. Mason's on both sides of Mason Road, coming up to San Pedro here. So this is the parcel right here that he's talking about. The wetlands is there, it's greater than 10 acres. So I'm not sure this changed during the last shoreline zoning update. The only difference the town has is that forested wetlands would be included versus non-forested wetlands. So I think there's about 20 acres right here that's up and out. The only way for him to access it would be to put a road in, and then you're encouraged in development for the whole thing. What really started this is he was trying to break a lot off down in this area here. But most of his road frontage that he needs would be in this buffer zone area. And none of the buffer...
Well, 70 feet inside the wetland buffer, as I measured the wetlands on the ground. And see, you're showing that coming across the road. It doesn't come across the road.
150 feet of roughly road frontage. So it is National Wetland Inventory mapping, and IFNW's Wading Bird Habitat is what really generated this up into it. So you can kind of see the dashed lines down here showing probably the National Wetland Inventory. And that doesn't go up there. So as we've told anybody, you can have a wetlands delineator delineate that wetlands and take a look and see how inaccurate they are. And we've had several people leave the office with that intention, and none of them's come back. Which leads us to believe that possibly our mapping is less stringent than what they've actually gone out and found in the field.
But does soil at all enter into this? I mean, because, I mean, it just seemed to be black and white. If you were in that buffer, I mean, what kind of soils should have? No?
No, if you're in the buffer, then yeah, it wouldn't matter what type of soils. Because the resources generated the soils, the ferns, the vegetation, and that has determined the edge of the wetland. Then the size of the wetland determines the buffer. So zoning board could work, I think up to 50 feet of moving things if there was criteria. But I think the big thing, similar to, I can't remember, Slickman's meeting or town meeting that we had said if the maps are inaccurate with that new data, we'd update the maps and the town would adopt new maps if we found inaccuracies to them.
You're suggesting that the times when the map has been investigated, I'll use the word, it's held up generally?
Not for this particular site. And I mean, if we look at this one site here, one of the areas that kind of concerned me would be that the wetlands are out into the street.
They're a mix-o'!
The street's been there for a while, and it wouldn't surprise me if there's poor soils under the road. But, I mean, we're only talking five to 10 feet there, a little feet there. One of the bigger issues is he's trying to break a lot off to sell, so he can, you know, won't say pay his taxes, but generate revenue without selling the whole thing. And he's got about 154 feet there. So he needs 100 feet that is down into the resource protection to get his 250 frontage plus his acreage. So the... You can't use resource protection land for your square footage or your road frontage.
So basically, I'm screwed. That 68th lot, nothing to do with it.
What's coming in from the corner, lower radiant corner? No, way down on the right.
No, we don't, see, again, we don't go out into Goose Pond Road. I know on the tax map, it shows it, but on the ground, it doesn't go out into Goose Pond Road.
Yeah, so apparently that cuts back ahead and behind. So that was one of our thoughts, too. So I mean, the only way I saw is you put a road in, there's your road frontage, and you build a lot off of it. But the cost of the road would be the cost of the lot.
More than that.
So if you force somebody into it, then they don't do one lot, they do four or five. And you're cutting, well, I guess you've got 20 acres there, so...
You'd have to go all the way to the level of baby? Or could you go just dirt?
It'd be dirt, big gravel-based road. So, and we do have some people in town that you can do a gravel road, engineer designs it, engineer says it's built to town standards. And then at that point, we've had every five years, you can break a lot off, it's not a subdivision. So you could create one, five years, break another one off. Or you could give lots to blood relatives. And so if he had three people that wanted a lot, he could sell a lot, five years from now, sell another lot. For three with relatives, he could put five lots out there. None of it's a subdivision.
And I thought, I thought it was, it used to be, you could sell three lots before it kicked in, subdivision.
Three in five years. Your first lot is the existing one, you can break one, and then I think you have to retain it. And then your second one is in five years. That loophole, I usually try to reread every time before somebody uses it. But the blood relatives, I'm not sure what he asks for relatives, but he could give those people lots, too. And they're all exempt from being considered a lot. So there's a huge, I won't call it a loophole, but an incentive for landowners not to turn that into 20 houses.
But, I mean, the frustrating thing is, out of cash sale. We were ready, written, already closed. And yet, you know, Ken wouldn't give them a building on. And the same way over the flat ground road, they had to also cash sale. Then, you know, couldn't build a lot there. So there we got, you know, the acreage. And, you know, as I look at it, you know, there's room enough down on the flat ground road. It's all just sand and gravel. You already got a house there that was approved by the town. But now, I can't sell, only can sell one lot because of the requirements in your buffer strips now.
I mean, you're kind of intugated that maybe a zoning board of appeals would perhaps take a look at this.
I'd have to reread the section. They're allowed to determine the edge if it's a little fuzzy. But in this case here, a wetlands person would delineate it. We'd look at the ordinance. If it's greater than 10 acres, it's 250. And I think both of yours are greater than the 10 acres. This is the flat ground parcel that he owns down there. And between the wetlands and the buffers... There's a big stand of trees right there. So basically, resource protection is timber, obviously.
But did I get a permit to do that?
Correct.
So I don't have any alternative? Keep paying taxes on it?
The flat ground road is 27 acres. Assessed at $9,800. So assessment has acknowledged that it's resource protection and has reduced it down there.
But not the parcel I'm talking about? I mean, where one builds out a house lot, that's assessed for $73,000.
For 60 acres?
On Mason, not the one you're talking about, on Mason?
That's what they told me today from the assessments office.
Did they tell you there's no reduction for the resource protection on it?
Nope.
So it's an abatement you'd have to file?
Yeah, as you said. Get back to them if, you know, they can't sell any house lots or anything.
So you're, I guess I need to follow this a little clearer. You want to sell one lot?
Right now, yeah, because that's why I figured all I can hope for road frontage down there. But then again, up next to the foot, I want to sell one on each side of it, too. But again, it falls within that same parameters that it's gonna fall within, yeah, there, the road frontage there. But the two acres would come back down probably into the 250-foot buffer strip.
But the idea of building the road is cost prohibitive?
To me, it is, yes.
Even though that would open up the lot?
Yeah, but then again, yeah.
And potential other lots?
That's something, again, an investment. But after May, you know, it bothers me is that, you know, I'd have to go through that ripper rule. So right now, I guess down there on Mason Road, I could squeeze one in there. Even though there's already a house there permitted.
Does that would block off all the rest of the property in the back if you put a house there, correct?
Yeah, he wouldn't have access.
So there's about 20 acres there. Because I think right next to the foot place, I don't think you can get, even though the road frontage, I think, is there.
Up in this corner here?
Yeah, both, yeah.
You're close with your road frontage, but...
But the acreage is gonna be...
It's a half an acre. What zone that is, is that just rural village transition? So two acres, 250. So you got the road frontage on one side, no acreage. You got the acreage on the other side, no road frontage. But like you're saying, if you were to sell a house lot out of here, then you can't access your back lot.
Modern, you can.
True, through the resource protection.
Yeah.
That's not gonna help you sell the other properties down the road.
But then again, I was looking at just sell that as a woodlot.
And I don't know what we can do. I mean, other than suggest taking a look at the zoning board.
But I would say right now, the way things go, that'd be, you could turn me down. Because I don't think I can prove that's under 10 acres. Wouldn't have brain, I guess.
And there's no doubt anywhere that a wetland delineator might be of assistance to?
Yeah, I just don't think you're gonna, you know, to use that parameters, hey, no, no. You came up to 60 acres. But I don't think you're ever gonna, you know, get it down in half. And that's what you'd have to do.
You're not gonna come up with 100 feet here. It's not off by 100 feet.
Well, on the ground, it is. That measured it. So I measured from the edge of wetlands up to the 250 corner, 180 feet.
And what's also harder is if he creates a lot here, if he had a legal lot that he could create here, then his remaining lot would be non-conforming because he's got no road frontage up here. And he'd have acreage down here. But so even though if he could create a conforming lot, the remaining land would be non-conforming. So he shouldn't be doing that either.
Except it's still a woodlot.
I don't think you have woodlot definitions. It was an old terminology. They used to allow illegal lots created all the time for woodlots. But then people come in 20 years later and say, "I've been paying taxes on this lot, now I can't build on it?" You know, somebody gave it to them for whatever reason. So we've basically kind of prohibited creation of illegal lots through the zoning rules.
So the town be interested in buying it? It's so valuable, it's a property.
I think I'd mention talking to the Three Rivers Land Trust would be the only one I would know that would be attracted to it.
Okay, well, at least I just wanted time to express my views. Because then Ken said, "Not many people complain." Well, you know.
Outside of my office, they all complain in my office. They don't go any further.
Ken, did you go through with Richard, the saga that we've just been through about?
2.2.2.6, yeah. Yeah, we've been through that. And I mean, we talked about maybe the neighbor wants to switch some land here, or there's a few things. He was just hoping that he's had this lot forever, it's 60 acres. And he was just trying to break a chunk off.
Is that property that the arrow's on right now? Or no, it's not on right now, I'm sorry. There, is that property have a house on it?
Yes.
Right here, a house and a swimming pool. So, I mean, that was one of my first thoughts. But he was hoping not to go through the hassle of, you know, switching road frontage for a bunch of backland and... That's Grammy roses. So you never know. I mean, they may give up some of this and trade it for all back here, or... And that's what the zoning board would be looking for, that every single avenue possibly has been exhausted. And they would be looking for, if you have a spot to build on your lot, that would probably be all they care about. Not that you want to generate more. Because you still could, just by putting a road in. If you built the road into here with a little cul-de-sac, you'd have five, six houses in there easily.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Alright, thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
You can't build a, you know, single driveway that has forks off at the end?
Basically, that's all it is. It's a 20-foot wide gravel driveway right away with some ditching with a good base.
But I mean, without going to the extent of a road?
You'd need to create the road for road frontage.
But it still would have to be a town-proved road, even though we're talking in terms of a driveway.
That's all it is, is a driveway. 12-inch baser with 6-inch minus, and then four inches of crush on top of it. And it's just deeded meets and bounds described on a document with ditching on it. So it's fairly, just really a glorified driveway bringing it in. But the problem is, it's pretty long. It's pretty long. And he's got wood roads already, but they're in the resource protection. So they were hoping to just jump on the wood load roads and utilize it. And it's 600 feet there. So three poles just to get back there. But if you do anything in this area, you'll kill yourself for outbacking and not be able to use all that.
He can't. And what's the deal with the lower radiant corner? Like just, there's no way you can access that?
Over here?
Yeah.
Our maps are probably inaccurate. He does not go right to that.
And at least he wouldn't get, you know, the width he needed to put it right in the way.
Correct, yeah.
Might be a pin point.
Yeah, so the logging roads come in off of here, come up through and go out through. So he was really hoping to utilize the logging roads, which would, in realistic terms, that would be the best thing to do versus cutting all these trees and putting a brand-new road in. It would be to reuse that stuff. But it's all in the MV. Yeah, so it's all, this is all in resource protection, so...
Looks like it follows the line of the buffer almost.
Kind of, yeah. It's just in it.
It's what we do, yeah. Alright, any other comments, questions about it?
Okay, go ahead. Would the, the planning boards, would that have helped tomorrow?
Yeah, what about flat ground? Where it's all RP, he could have been able to do something there. He's had the lot forever. Resource protection had been down there for a long time. And that was the specific intention of the state is to allow somebody to utilize their land. A 1,500-square-foot house with the conditions of everything put on top of it. But the Mason Road, no. You've got 20 acres of usable land there, assessed at $73,000 for 60 acres. I thought there was already a reduction for OPB, but he'll just have to do an abatement and reduce the tax base, so...
There should have been a reduction in this.
I kind of thought $75,000 seems cheap for 60 acres. Although 40 of it's an RP, you can still timber harvest it. I mean, it seemed...
And there's the capability, meaning it's something. Depending on how you want to do it, as opposed to the one on the other side where there's no ability to build it. So that's why that was cut way back down over there.
Yeah, $10,000 for 20 acres.
It's just, you know, maybe you do talk to the neighbor.
And that's what the zoning board's gonna want to see. That you've totally exhausted every single thing. They'd want receipts from certified mail. You've approached the neighbors and tried to readjust. And again, on his lot, he can build on it. He just can't build, sell lots and build, so... It is tough. He's had it in the family for years and years and years. But it's always been resource protection out there. I know resource protection has expanded across the street because the edge of the forested wetlands are a little bigger. I just don't know how much is researched on his, how much has expanded out on his.
Can you sit in on ZPA meetings?
Yep.
They don't grant any variances. It's really, really hard to meet that criteria.
I was just hoping you're up to speed, that's all they have to...
Nothing, because of the zoning board. Because they don't grant any variances. Because they don't grant any variances. The state looks at it, if you've got, it used to be a reasonable use of your property, that you can have a dock and a picnic table, it was a reasonable use, it wasn't a variance granted. They relaxed a little bit on that, but our ordinance doesn't allow reductions in the 100-foot setback, so...
All right, anything else? Okay, we're back to Nason Farms.
I said, I just missed you guys, that's all. That, really.
So we had discussed Lot 8, which is the lot at the end of the hammerhead towards the right. I have, I have a copy of the most recently, the last version was a plan you guys approved, if anybody would like to see it. But, in a nutshell, we're hoping to, you know, we have, you know, per the last meeting, last go around, we had developed these 175-foot-long building, building areas, they're called in cluster subdivisions. For that particular, the Lot 8, we're hoping to slide it backwards about 21 feet and hook into the town. The normal town setback of 25 feet along the back of the lot, we had sort of, upon agreement between all of us, sort of, you know, I guess arbitrarily to kind of lay out the cluster subdivision, we had chosen these other building areas, which is part of going through clusters. And basically, they had gone out there and cleared the lot and leveled it somewhat other than Billy, but they had gone out and cleared the lot and decided where they thought the building would best be suited on the lot, and then their belief was that the standard setback in this zone applied, which is generally 25 feet. But per our meetings, we had come up with something slightly different, you know, cluster, a lot of those normal regulations go out the window, and I think there was a little bit of confusion there, so they end up being, you know, 39 and a half feet away from that back line with the back right corner of their footing. And they're hoping that we could come to an agreement to slide that building area back, to kind of make everything okay, and on Ken's end of things, and allow the budget to continue. And I don't know if there was any reason why anybody believed that, you know, we shouldn't be able to slide that same-sized building envelope just back 20 feet, and...
If I remember right, Joe, it was you guys who wanted the back line, correct?
Oh, yeah, that was something we had proposed that you guys went along with, and again, sort of part of the idea in the cluster is to, is to, I guess, narrow it out a little bit where the buildings are going to go, kind of in overall scheme, and I think, you know, we've got this hammerhead coming through in our building area, the blue ones are the, the blue lines on there, the current building area, the magenta, the pink is what we're proposing, and I think they were backing away from that hammerhead a little bit, and then there was a nice knob back there.
Is this where the driveway comes in, too, at the end of the hammerhead?
Yeah, the driveway comes in through here, then kind of they're hoping to hook into, I think the garage is there.
And that's why it's kind of...
Yeah, and there is, the other gentleman in the audience, he did have some, you know, has some knowledge on certain aspects of the building, if we do want to ask Steve any questions.
So let me go back to the back of the building envelope.
Yep.
Was that determination more arbitrary?
Yeah, more or less, you know, if you remember right, the first time we were in here, about a different foundation, there was some confusion, because the building envelopes were a little more hodgepodge in a way, a little more random in the numbers, so I reorganized them and squared them all up with the road lines and the pins and tried to put, so I held the distance of 775 feet, just as kind of a round number. Whatever was left in the back was left in the back, and that then ended up being 25 plus 21.05, so it ended up being, what's that, 46 feet just happened to be what was left in the back for a setback on that line, based on us doing some rounded numbers that made sense to everybody coming off the road. And again, when they went to do the install, I think they believed the normal 25-foot setback applied, so we had that little bit of an issue in the corner there, that we're hoping to back away from that hammerhead and with the building area, but also, you know, more importantly, make it so they don't have to move that footing, just for, due to a line, we sort of arbitrarily picked it back for the lot there.
So at first, I was opposed to having different setbacks for different lots, and we'd never be able to keep track of them, and we were going to start changing others eventually and stuff, but this one has the hammerhead in it, which really kind of pushes things back. If you look at the 50-foot hammerhead, and we're only changing things 15 feet on the back, it seemed like that was a reason for this particular lot. I think if it was any other lots, I'd say no, but this one had the hammerhead, so it seemed realistic or reasonable to, I think it's just 15 feet were moving in the back, correct?
It ends up being 21, 21 feet, just, I was, I was making it so we were at the 25-foot setback in the back, that's the difference between the two, is 21.05, so, yeah, it ends up being a change of 21. Again, I did it for the sake of simplicity, it's, every modification we keep making to these is trying to...
Simplify.
Simplify it, you know.
So you're just basically talking about, when you talk about those numbers, it's the envelope interchanging, but the, this is only encroaching on this area by a minimum of feet, right?
Right, right, so, but I was just, if I was going to adjust it, instead of having this be the rounded number people could work off of the back, I was putting 25 feet off those pins, which is the setback in the zone, and then keeping the 175 feet forward off the back, so I'm not changing the size of the envelope, but I'm just hoping to slide it back to kind of, again, accommodate what's going on and back away from that hammerhead.
I mean, there's nothing back here that would indicate to us that there's an issue?
No, it's open space for the subdivision.
Did seven, did these two back lots have some kind of funky slope in the front, too?
It's kind of a depression in the front, and then as you get to the back, you know, I think, it's hard to see the department be on this map, but yes, there's this lot, this lot especially, kind of having knobs on the back, and kind of little depressions in the front, it kind of goes down and rises up, so I don't know, eight feet, give or take, to the back there, so I, I think that's the area that they were drawn to, just because it's the highest point on the lot.
It's still generally flat compared to...
Compared to, yes, definitely. Now, I was out there looking at it, I thought it was pretty flat myself.
Yeah, yeah, it does rise a little bit going into it, so...
Well, anybody else, comments?
I think the proposal is fine.
Proposal to change it?
Yes, fine.
Okay, thanks, all right. Motion?
Do you think the motion may approve the proposed change in the building envelope?
Second?
Not envelope, area, building area.
Building area, they call it in the cluster, yes. Conservation subdivision, call them that.
Tom, we got it in there first. Comments on the motion itself? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Good?
Yeah, I can vote in favor.
All right, so let's back to the five.
Thank you. Look, there's Billy working right there, right in the way. No erosion control, I think we've got a sundae.
Sunday afternoon, middle of the weekend.
Well, he doesn't have yellow trucks, that must be in the truck. Well, that looks good.
He has a site truck or something.
Brought the, hopefully, eight my logs, and I've now brought two, so I can just leave you with my mind on the way.
Did you bring the my log pen?
Of course I did.
Joe, what's happening out there, is it, are they getting some buyers?
Yeah, they're, I mean, this Lot 8 was sold, you know, again, this is somebody other than Billy working on that, they've had some interest, they've installed the foundation on Lot 1, they'll be framing that up for like a spec house soon.
The lumber's there?
Yeah, and so, and that's the hope, is, these guys are kind of working in tandem, so they were hoping the framing crew could jump from this one to this one if we got it sorted out and kind of save everybody involved some time and some money, but other than that, I haven't, he hasn't handed me the 70 pins or written any descriptions, so I don't think he has any, any other pending sales with it, but I know he's, he's happy, and he needs to get that road finished up, he wants to get it, you know, paid and everything, or he pushes it too hard.
He's got the grass growing now, stabilized.
If you saw it this spring, the water was high for a while, now he's got all these drainage drifts and cross couvertings, and the ponds working.
It's good, I agree.
So, you know, I think he's kind of in a hurry to sell a couple more of them, but at that point, I think he wants to slow down and, you know, make sure it gets, once his, the numbers are back where they need to be, and he's made some of his money back, I think he wants to take his time and make it really nice, so...
So how much? How much would the footings have cost, assuming that it didn't pass tonight?
I have no idea, I've heard two different estimates, I personally have no idea. I've heard one person on one side of it estimate 2,000, I've heard one person on the other side of it estimate 10,000, and I honestly don't know what the truth is in the middle.
At least we're not going to have to find out.
Yeah. But, yeah, everything looks good, I'll meet you guys on here and get this thing recorded, so it's on...
Do we have anything else on the turnip? Okay, that's all. Anybody else with anything? Tom, you good?
Yes, sir. Do we have to sign that?
Did I bring one, I even brought it back.
All right, is there then a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, good, so then we'll sign that.